Welcome to the work session July twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four, Malala River School District. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the river which stands one nation.
Of God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Lori. Okay, do we have any public comment?
Um, Mr. Lanahan is listening, but I don't see any hands raised, so no.
Okay, thank you. And then, do we have any um changes to the agenda? Very none. We will move on to the resolution, I'm sorry, um, our action items, which is, the first one is recommendation to approve the OTAC contract for project manager services. Tony, do you want to speak to that?
I will, uh, very briefly, and then I'll turn it over to um Dr. Stewart to provide some more context. So you have in your packet um, the culmination of work that was done by a group that included members of the board, members of the community uh, to identify OTAC to serve as our project management firm throughout the uh, replacement of the, of the middle school and, and um, Ron, if you want to jump in there and, and provide some additional context for the board, but that's presented this evening as a, as an action item for recommendation for your approval.
You bet. Uh, well, as you can read, uh, requests for proposals were advertised for project management services. Received five proposals. A proposal review committee reviewed those proposals and scored them. We then interviewed the top three firms. And after confirming references, we selected OTAC CPM as the firm. And as Tony also pointed out, a many thanks to the committee members who spent many hours reviewing proposals and interviewing these firms and discussing deliberating uh, for a great length of time to come to this conclusion. So we have a recommendation for the board, and that is to uh, approve entering into a contract with the OTAC CPM for construction project management services for the middle school replacement project.
Great. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, Ron. Does anybody have any questions for Ron about that agreement?
I, I do, Madam Chair. Uh, would you be, um, Ron be willing to give me the highlights? I, I tried reading the attached agreement. I'm not sure I really understand it. It looks like owner agree, for example, owner agree not, agrees to pay consulting some not to exceed one point one four six um, for the professional services and not to exceed some of eleven thousand, three forty seven for reimbursable expenses. Help me understand uh, the, the staff and run rate that that would buy.
Um, I could look that up for you, but uh, they tried to schedule of, of uh, between four to five staff members and varying hours uh, per month, depending on what phase of the uh, design or construction that we're in. Um, with the project manager saying being light during design with the senior and program managers being a little heavier during design. And then during construction, the project manager would be uh, doing the bulk of the time. And then the senior and the program manager would back off because that's, they're not, they're not needed as much. But they've mapped it out in their proposal, um, you know, through the three and a half years, uh, month by month for all four of the people proposed. Uh, I don't have the rates, uh, I do have the rates. Is that what you're asking for? Is the hourly?
Yes, exactly.
And so an hourly rate um, for the program manager is a hundred and eighty nine dollars an hour. For the senior project manager, it'd be one seventy three. For the project manager, who's actually a senior project manager that they're proposing as a project manager, is one sixty three. And the project coordinator is one oh five.
Good. And is there, uh, thank you for that. Um, that seems actually fairly in line with what I would expect, uh, just based on what I know. Um, is there? Is there, help me understand if, um, so the duration of this, and I, it's, I'm sure it's in this contract, I just missed it, but is this to be? This is a, almost like a fixed bid, whether it takes ten months or twenty four months, that, that we're paying no more than one point one four.
Yeah, it's a time materials not to exceed amount. We would expect it to be under that amount. It extends past the end of construction through warranty. Uh, that's important because there's a lot of work that happens after we think the building is done, but there's things to still work on and things pop up. And so it's nice having some support during that.
How long is the warranty period?
Uh, one, one year.
One year, okay.
And that's just for the general contractor to warranty, you know, the different pieces of equipment and other things will have you know, longer or less than warranties, but the general contractor warranties for one year.
So at those rates, you quoted me between one oh five and one eighty nine an hour. If, uh, for whatever reason, things are running long, um, they, and, and we, we burn through those hours, they will not bill us about that. So in other words, they will absorb the overage.
Yeah, unless there's some
And this is a change order.
Yeah, an unknown unforeseen, yeah.
And that's what I'm poking at a bit is what, how, how will the unforeseen be handled? This is a change management process outlined in there?
Actually, it is mentioned in there of I couldn't point to the, the section it is, but um, yes, it is a time materials not to exceed for the scope of work listed and for the duration of the time listed, typically, they don't use all the hours each month, and so there's some cushion there at the end. But in the event of something odd happening and it goes long or more work is needed, they'll ask for um, change order. And that's not after the fact, that's usually during the fact of something happening.
And the change order is approved by administration, the oversight committee?
My experience is just the administration.
Okay. And I apologize if it's in there and I, I didn't see it, I, I only browses, you know?
And then reports to the oversight committee, um, you know, all expenditures and changes.
So I assume that they have a standard stable of communication on scope, schedule, budget, red, yellow, green, um, status reporting, that's part of what they'll be delivering is communication to our oversight committee?
Uh, whether, you know, they do it or help us do it, Andrea is also very experienced with this, um, but yes, they will assist with creating a dashboard, much like you're describing probably to talk about budget, schedule and commitments being met.
Perfect.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ron.
Amy?
Hi, Linda.
Yeah. I was going to be fair, I had a chance to know how the committee, that I played the five companies that did five for this. Can you hear me okay or I'm still choppy?
You're choppy.
Ron, so the way that we know this, the five companies that we looked at all this information through that firm background, local involvement, the K twelve experience and past performance, he goes through that with the entire board.
I, I'm not quite understanding you, Linda. I, I think maybe you're talking about five companies that were looked at.
Yeah, we were looking at it, we're going through the proposal score sheet. I wanted Ron to give a summary of how we evaluated the five companies.
Did you understand that, Ron?
Uh, she's asking for um, kind of a summary of how the committee scored the proposals.
Uh huh.
And we came to that conclusion. So in the proposals, um, it's very, very strict uh, with the criteria that we scored them on. And there was nine, but really eight uh, criteria. Uh, one was the firm background. One was the local involvement, and that was uh, really seeking to see how they would um, be able to use local community and um, resources. K twelve experience and past performance. The staffing plan. The approach to the project. The justification of why we should select you. And energy incentive experience. And then uh, the three references. Now within we, each of those, there is a lot of detail that would take a while to go over. But those were the main categories of the criteria that we scored them on.
Okay.
Answer the question, Linda?
Yeah. The process.
It, it, a bit of an extensive process, both to read these proposals and then to, to read through the criteria under each one of those headings and then just do thoughtful scoring. It took some effort.
Well, thank you, Linda, and everybody that was on that committee. Really appreciate that. Does anybody else have any questions? Craig, it looks like you might have just jumped on. We're going over the project management action item. Did you have any questions?
No question. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have just one. If I, could you tell me who was on that committee? The, the proposal review and scoring and selection?
Yeah, it's on the um, the first document that was
Is it in there? Okay.
Book. Believe Linda, Mitch, Andrea. Um, Andy.
Dwight Mason.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
Oh, yeah, a combination of um, staff and leadership as well as community members.
Madam Chair, I, I uh, moved that we approved the OTAC contract for project manager for the middle school bond project as presented.
Moved in seconded. Any other further discussion?
Sorry, I missed two seconded it. Linda, okay, thank you.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, no discussion. All in favor to approve the OTAC contract for project manager for the middle school bond project, raise your right arm. And it looks like we're unanimous. Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, next up on our action items, we have a resolution that we had read and approved um, during our last meeting, July eleventh, I believe it was. I'm having troubles with my board book here, sorry. The enabling resolution that we had read that included um several different items. There was a, an error on that resolution that was brought forward. And it was just the substitute pay for teachers. Um, it was in the resolution that we read um, during the last meeting, it was for last year's rates instead of this year's rates, so that has been updated and is highlighted on today's resolution and board book. So we just need to take action and approve this revised version of the enabling resolution.
That's fair.
It was hard to hear you, but I think you were making a motion to approve it. Okay.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Pretty straightforward. Okay. All those in favor of approving the revised resolution, enabling resolution, two thousand and twenty four, two thousand and twenty five dot zero zero one, please raise your hand, right hand. And it looks like motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up, we have information and discussion. And Mrs. Watson, you are up to discuss our logo.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen. Last time we talked, we started this in June. Um, but last time we talked, we um, discussed having more time because the polling that we sent out about the logo was right before the Fourth of July. And so we emailed that back out um, to all our parents and all of our contacts that we have in our contacts. And we got a few more votes. This one still uh, became, still is number one. And the second choice was this one. But we also got input from you at the last meeting that you wanted us to ask about modifications. And to ask a specific question about which one represented the um, schools the best. So we did that. Here, I'm gonna stop sharing and pull that up on a different screen and then I'll go back to it. Um, and we also were able to work with the company and they reopened the um the contest so that we could give the um, the feedback that, that people, because we asked them exactly the question that we were asked, which logo represents Malala River Schools the best? That's what we ask. And then we also did a follow-up for people who wanted to participate and asked them what could be done to that design to make them like it more. And so again, we had a very similar result with design A um, which was this one here with the river being the most preferred, um, a hundred and nineteen people to twenty five. And then we took these comments that we received, which we received about forty eight comments. And we sent those to the designers. And the designers then modified, right? So they, we, they told them, you know, like one of the comments was I would like this logo better if it didn't have an orange sky, because the orange sky reminded them of the fires. So they came back and they gave us a blue. And then they also put trees. That was one of the designs. And we got a lot of modifications, like this was the other one for the one that um, people liked second best. And then the one that people have liked the most. You know, we got feedback that people didn't like the words inside of there, so that she gave us one with the words to the side. We asked them to show us kind of what it would look like, black and white as well. So that's why we see some modifications here. Um, we also talked about flipping the mountain, remember, so that it looked more like Mount Hood and, and they, several of them did that as well. So then we had like a whole different set of designs, right? So we, a second time we polled and, and the first poll that we did, you know, we sent that via newsletter and then we did a reminder. And we got about two thousand, four hundred and seventeen people clicked on it. But that doesn't mean they all vote and it doesn't mean they all, you know, take action. So that is very consistent. After we got the modifications back, we asked them, okay, you told us you would like it better with these changes, you know, do you like it better now? And these two tied. And that was before they gave us the blue one, because we have, we only had two weeks in between here and we didn't get the blue background. But that, again, they told us they still like this blue better than the, than the orange. So that's where we're at. Um, this one, um, this one right here, whether it has the words to the side, the reversed mountain or modifications, is still winning or tied for winning, no matter what survey we give it. And then this one is kind of um, moving ahead a little bit by making changes to it, adding the trees, like you said, Amy. But also then making the blue, we could, you know, try pulling it again if we wanted, but I don't. I said last time I didn't think it would change. And we did get about a hundred more people take the original poll. But the ranking didn't change. The one that was still the favorite in that initial ranking is this one. And so um, that's kind of where we're at. I'm really hopeful that we can make a decision. I, I know it's a hard decision and I know that um there's gonna be things that we all, you know, maybe it wasn't our favorite or it would be better if it was this or that, but at the end of the day, um, I also was at school PR conference last week, so I showed it to literally hundreds of school PR people. And they all said, well, it doesn't matter, they're all better than what you have that you're working with now. And so again, our base reason here is we would like to see a change because what we have now is becoming challenging and we're rolling out a new strategic plan, new websites, lots of new collateral, and we would like to have that with a refreshed logo. So um, you know, if it was up to me, I would say go with this one with the blue. Or I would say go with this one that overall the community likes the best.
Okay. So moving forward. Um, since this is just information, just, well, we don't have to vote on it, I guess. Do you want an answer tonight or are you looking for an answer maybe our email this week since not everybody's here?
Um, I would just like an answer. I don't, I guess I'm not too caught up that as far as how or when, but um, if we could get a decision that allowed us to move forward, that would be awesome.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments?
Amy?
Yes.
I move that we uh, adopt Andrea's first choice.
She's rejoicing. Well, it's, it's not an action item, so I don't know that we need to go through the whole motion and approving. Um, but maybe if we could get everybody's consensus on the most popular one or go ahead, Rob.
Um, I like that one with the change to the blue, but it, it looks too much like our old logo, I think. You know, it's, it's changed, but it, I say we go with the one that everybody likes. It, it still looks, both of them look great, in my opinion. But um, yeah, I, that one I go with, but I do like that one, that new one with the blue. Not with the red, that, the blue looked really good on there, yeah.
Yes.
I like the way that looked, but again, it, it still looks an awful lot like our old one. And if we want to go for a complete change, then we should go, definitely go with the other one. And that's what more people have voted for anyways, and I do like it. So that's my two cents.
Okay, Craig?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted uh, to say, first off, I didn't hear what Neil said. So can, can Neil, could you?
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Neil.
I, I actually moved I, I actually moved that we adopt Andrea's first choice. Which is the uh, yeah, the one that her source pointing at, or was pointing at, not this not the one with the little tiny schools in it.
Can you, can you show me which one uh, that is?
Uh.
Show it on the screen, Andrea?
I think the one with the blue is at the top, Andrea.
Design A, design B, design I'm looking on a little tiny screen because I'm on my cell phone, so I apologize, but
That one.
Which one?
That one wasn't the one that the majority of the public liked, though.
Well, this one, a version of this tied for first when we asked them when we presented modifications. So we asked them after we got feedback, it was orange then. But this one right here, four oh eight tied with three, four, six. And everything with bigger numbers is stuff they gave us afterwards. I do not think we should go with three forty six. I think if we go with this version, this artist, we go with one of these that fixes the problems, right? That makes the schools bigger, like what Neil, what other people observed. I mean, a lot of people observed that, but Neil was able to express it. And then also, you know, we reversed the mountain. So I think you know, I think this is the one that the community voted for the most, right? Because we pulled it the most. The changes that it's, that's in this one are more subtle. But when we started telling them to make it more representative, then this one tied with it, with an orange background. So I think either one, honestly, four twenty or three uh, I wish I could eliminate, I, you know, without actually eliminating them, it's really hard for me to um, scroll because they're in order that they submitted, not in order of the artists, but one of these, you know, that has the word.
If, if I, if I may, just real quick, I'd like to say I do like uh, that second one. I like it better now that it's had some changes to it. Um, but I, but I do kind of feel like, um, and I'm not trying to contradict anyone here. I kind of had a sense, I, I kind of feel the community in terms of an overall sort of design, if that makes any sense. But I, but
You were cutting out, but I think you meant, I think you're trying to say um, the community's choice is what we should choose.
Well, I was, I was saying, yes, I think we should go with what the community seemed to like overall in the beginning, because either way, at worst, it's a tie. But at the same time, if the consensus of the board and, and the district administration was that it does really matter, then I could support that too.
Okay.
But I think sort of uh, some version of design A would, would, I think, not be my preference as much as I think it would be the community's preference, and I, and I like that fact.
Me too. Anybody else have any input, Terry? Or do we just want to get this over with? It's good to have a fresh logo, for sure. And I appreciate all the work you've put into this, Andrea.
Well, I think the process is still good. I still think it's a hard decision. I mean, I said that in the beginning, it is. And it, but it will also grow on us. I think that we like things more when we see them and when we see them on stuff, you know, I think that's one of the reasons why this version where they actually gave us, they gave us a picture of it on something, and I think that that already automatically like makes it more real somehow.
That did make it look cool on the business card. That's one of the things that popped out at me, too.
Yeah.
Tony, did you have something to say? I think I saw you raise your hand.
I think I was just gonna ask a clarifying question to, to make sure I was hearing correctly and, and if it is a true statement to say that once this one that we're looking at here, four twenty, Andrea, had been modified uh, with the feedback that came in through the very last processes, that this one ties with the other that
That is correct. These rated exactly the same, three point eight. Once we, once we took those forty eight comments, what would make you like design A? What, what about, what could we do to design A to make it more representative of the Malala River Schools? That was the question that Neil asked. And they said, we'll put trees in it and make the river blue and, you know, the, and put the words to the side. And then, then now this one pulled exactly even with that other one. But again, you know, I just, we pulled that other one a lot more and the variations of it were less, so you, you know, it rated four point four in the first round before modifications, but I think either one of these the community will accept and I think they like it. I mean, a lot of people voted for both of them. Um, in the second poll, um, this version got fifty number one and twenty number twos. And the other version, this blue one, got forty six number ones and eighteen number twos. So again, you still have a lot, I think that that seems like a low number, but that's a lot of engagement. I was surprised how much they persisted. Let's just put it that way. They really did persist in not only voting and ranking them, but also giving suggestions to make it better.
If that's the case, would it be helpful, and I took screenshots of each of those to just sort of have them side by side on the screen at the same time?
Sure, if you could do that, I'll stop sharing. That's a good idea. And Neil has his hand raised again. I don't know if everybody can see everything.
Go ahead, Neil.
Well, my concern, you know, both identify now who we are and what we do um, in, in this reference. But if you were to look at the black and white of the bottom one, it becomes kind of uh, you, you can't make out what any of that stuff is. To me, it becomes problematic when you go black and white. And maybe in today's all-color world, we would never print that way, but, um.
Well, we will. I can guarantee you.
If the picture, if the picture's going to mean anything to us, then one that would have some degree of clarity or, or at least a understanding of what it is that's being pictured would be better, um, would be the top one.
I agree with the black and white situation.
Well, I hate to say this, but when you, I, I'm looking, I'm looking at, I don't know if I'm looking at the right ones, but I'm looking at the one on top, and I'm picturing it in black and white. And, uh, trees and the background, sort of that meadow or whatever beyond the trees, are just gonna be like one thing in black and white. I don't know if you'll even be, hardly be able to tell if the trees are even there. Um, so I don't know if that makes a difference at all, but something to think about.
There might be enough shade difference, maybe.
Are you able to show that in black and white, Andrea?
Uh, I can, I believe so. I think I can show what they sense. And I, but I agree with Neil. I think the other one in black and white is much messier. To try to scroll through these two, I just hit a bunch of them. And so now I gotta find it again.
I do like how the schools is a brighter color to kind of emphasize that.
So this one's a reverse, so it's not black and white. You can see that, where they put it on dark material. Um, we asked them all to do that. Unfortunately, they don't always comply. I think that the other one did. But we don't, you know, this is, this is what Craig's talking about. You see how these kind of almost look like teeth then?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think this one would need some, some cleaning. You can see down here, like, it's almost like an abstraction.
I can kind of see that. I mean, not necessarily the trees so much, but what I'm talking about is not in that one, but in the other one, where.
In this one above, yeah.
You've got, you've got, e- even in when it's in color, it's like a dark color on a dark color. One color is just slightly less dark. So maybe, um, it's okay, but I, I mean, I just don't know. I'd have to see it to know. But again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to you guys. Um, the only, the only thing I would point out is, you know, on our current logo, I think part of the, the complaint was that it had the, it wasn't, you know, well enough proportion, because it had the, the words off to the side, and it made it really rectangular. And if I'm remembering that wrong, then forgive me. Um, but that's what I'm seeing in some of these new things, the kind of that same issue.
I think the logo before had blocky, more blocky letters, and they were, it was very long. So this is much shorter. So I think Andrea's gotten it down to where it's gonna be small enough to fit on.
Well, that another big difference is, is that we, in the other one, it's not only that it's this way long, it was also really tall.
Mm-hmm.
So it was both things. It was super tall and super wide. And so no matter what we did with it, where this one, you know, when, when we get done with the choosing, which I think you guys brought up some really good points. If we can agree that it can be one of these two, but let us run this through the paces for it being reversed in black and white, because he did not give us those. She did, but he did not. Um, we want to test for that, and we have eight days before we have to, so we can test for that and go with the one that's gonna be the best for production in single color or full color, reversed or black and white. Um, but I think the other thing is, is that because we're purchasing it in a modern era, we're gonna ask for this to be both the image and the letters. We're gonna ask for them to give it to us already sized and shaped in different variations. This one, you know, is square, but he's given us circles, too. And we're gonna say we want that in both, so that we can use it in the various ways that we weren't able to before, because I don't know if it was hand-drawn before. I really don't know how long we've had it. You guys would be a better judge. I know Lori has said it's as long as she's been here. Um, there's just, digitizing this stuff has come a long ways from 20 years ago. Yeah.
I do agree with the community that it should have a blue background.
Yeah, that was a major improvement. I, I believe. I think that, and so I think, again, this was a good process and pushing back and slowing down just a bit, we got a better result.
Okay.
For sure.
So do you want to work with the artist to come up with the black and white?
I can keep working with them if we can have the consensus that we could go with either one of these, whichever one tests better in production, not with the polling. I don't want to ask them again, because we've really kind of scammed them. Yeah, yeah.
No need to do any more polling, Andrea.
Just te- test them out, like make copies of it, you know, because a lot of what happens is we print stuff in color, and then people copy it in black and white. We want to see what that looks like, three copies in.
I'm good with that.
When you copy the one that's got the trees in front of the meadow next to the river, it's gonna look fine if you're doing a look at a grayscale or whatever, but as soon as, as soon as you do that in just a regular photocopy, you're not gonna be able to tell that there are even trees there. You'll just see a big, sort of a mass to the left side of the river.
Can we live with this then?
Thumb is up for your process.
Okay. Thank you. I really want a new logo really badly. I really do.
So you'll, you'll let us know?
Yeah.
The outcome, okay.
I'll do the testing. I, I'll be back in the office on Tuesday. I'm off till then. And then we'll send you an email with what our testing is and which one we want to go with.
Okay, sounds great.
Thank you. You guys are awesome.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks. I'm gonna beg out now. I appreciate, uh, everything, but I'm supposed to be playing, uh, with, uh, it's my wife's birthday, right? So thank you all, uh, for accommodating me. I appreciate it. I look forward to seeing you again as soon as possible.
Okay, see you later.
Bye-bye.
Uh, next up, we have board comments. Would anybody like to comment? Anybody have anything to bring up? Um, I will just bring up that I believe our, um, celebration and thank you barbecue, sorry, Andrea, I'm not thinking of the name of it right at the moment, is, um, on Wednesday, August 7th. So just want to bring that up, because that's gonna be a great event to join.
You had me at barbecue.
I think it's a barbecue. Anyways, there's gonna be food there. And then I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Stewart for joining us tonight and, um, assisting us with our proposal. That's all I had. If nobody else has anything, I'll just go over the upcoming meetings. Um, uh, the policy committee was changed from July 30th postponed to August 27th. August 8th, we have a business meeting at 7:00 PM at the district office, and August 22nd, work session at 7:00 PM at the district office. And now I just need a motion to adjourn.
I shall move.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Uh, my picture's frozen for some reason, so yeah, I'm raising my hand.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
You.
Everybody enjoys their vacation.
Great job.
Yep, good job, Amy. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.